As I mean, it'll come to order. Hammond City Council Public Hearing, December 23rd, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing number one, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an active sale for the purchase of the city, by the city, of 19.35 acres, more or less, and all improvements along the southerly side of U.S. Highway 190, the easterly side of Gon Lane, and the westerly side of Wayne Wright Road in Section 21 T-6 SR-8E Hammond, Tanjapahoa Parish, Louisiana, from Robert A. Moran III and Jamestown Inc. for the price of $1,300,000. Lacey Landrum.
As we explained at the last meeting when we introduced this item, this is an ongoing effort. I know it first came to the council in the spring when we considered it, and this does meet the standards of the appraisal. We have also, Mayor Pena Pinto has been very good in raising additional funds, $230,000 from private and public entities to also go towards this land purchase. We are matching a grant from DOTD Aviation of $1 million, so we do believe this is in the best interest of the city of Hammond and our airport. Just to remind you, this is to correct, the land purchase is to correct a displaced threshold on that runway. So the runway currently loses 690 feet of good usable runway that we can't use because the trees are too tall. You can't climb over them, and you can't climb over them when you're trying to land. So we're trying to buy this land so that we can remove the trees and therefore regain 690 usable feet of our runway for this purchase. And just a reminder, it's not just about the pilots that fly in and out of this airport for general aviation purposes or for even recreational purposes. It's more important to us as a city because this is an economic development project. Having that airport there and servicing as many corporate jets as we do brings people here to see their businesses that would normally not be coming through Hammond. And that opportunity is significant because it's their opportunity to see Hammond, see what we have to offer in and around our area, and to then consider expanding their business that's already in our footprint or moving their business to Hammond. So just to remind you, this is an important project on two fronts. One, for the safety of those pilots using the airport, and then two, on the economic development factor as a way to move forward with our airport and the growth.
David, you have anything to add?
Not, she pretty much said it all, Dave Laboue, Airport Director. When you look at the growth potential for what, getting our hands on that property and being able to cut trees and cull back vegetation and that kind of stuff, you're looking at larger airplanes that can come in over a longer period of time, you're looking at a longer runway. It impacts, it impacts safety, certainly from the point of view of aircraft performance and those kinds, and those types of things. Now, the other thing that we're looking at, once we, once we can, we can get rid of those trees, is an instrument approach to what is our longest runway. Right now, we have an instrument approach to our short runway. To be able to do the instrument, instrument approach to the longer runway, which is the one that runs southeast to northwest, we need to put some lights and some navigation equipment in that, in that area. If I could, I'd like to invite Mr. Tony Michelli. Tony is a retired FAA inspector and officer out of the Flight Standards District Office in Baton Rouge. Tony currently is a flight evaluator. He flies pretty much every day that we've got, that we've got sunshine with various people who want licenses, licenses in different areas, from private pilot all the way up to instrument and commercial. He's very familiar with this airport, certainly far more familiar than I, than I am. He's been here for decades flying out of it. And he can tell you about some of the safety issues associated with those trees, sir.
Thank you very much, Tony Michelli.
Could you please, just to clarify, can you state your address for the record, please?
Yes, it's 444-18 West Pleasant Ridge Road, Hammond, Louisiana.
Thank you.
70403. Like Dave mentioned, I'm a DPE there at the airport. I do certification rides. And basically, what this boils down to is safety. That's, that would be my interest, my only interest in this property being bought and getting rid of the obstacles that we have, because we did, we are losing right at 700 foot of runway. And I want to tell you what, flying in and out of the airport, you cannot see those trees at night. And it's just a matter of time, so. And I don't know if each of you realize why we have a Walmart in this town, I'm gonna tell you, because you have an airport. And that's from Sam Walton's mouth. I ran into him one day when they were building this Walmart, and he says, "The reason you got an airport, you have a Walmart in Hammond is because you have an airport and I can come in and check my store." And that's the case with a lot of businesses in this city. They can come in and check their businesses. So, from a safety standpoint, I think it's probably a good purchase. I don't want to say it can go wrong.
Thank you.
And just one other thing to add, as Lacey said, 690 feet right now, trees grow. So every time those trees grow and every time it gets remeasured, which is pretty much every year, we're gonna, we're gonna be losing more and more length on our runway.
So with the trees trimmed, I think we can land a category larger, is it one category larger at that airport without having to add to the runway, or is that, was that true?
You get back, you get, you get that 690 feet back and you get up to 6,500 feet, and we can pretty much land, I mean, you wouldn't be talking a widebody or a 747 or anything like that, but you could be talking about medium size of the larger airline type aircraft, 737s.
So without doing any improvements to the strip, the landing strip, we're just trimming the trees down, cutting, removing them, you'll add a little larger plane? How larger is it? I was just curious to see how big.
You mean other upgrades to the airport?
Yes, yes, without adding any more runway.
Okay, well, let me, let me first of all say that we wouldn't be trying to bring in aircraft that large the day after we, we cut the trees down, but the potential would be there to be able to do that, so.
My question was, how much, how, the runway now, as it stands?
Right, right.
I just, when the trees are down, gone, how much larger plane is possible to land on that runway without doing any improvements? I was just asking that.
So, I mean, you want me to take one aircraft type and compare it with another? We'll say a Gulfstream Six as opposed to a, an MD-80. That would be the difference in the size of airplanes. I don't know if you're familiar with those or not. Gulfstream Six is about as big as it gets for, for private aircraft. An MD-80, we've actually had a DC-9 in here before, a cargo aircraft. It's a little bit shorter. An MD-80 is an airliner. So you're looking at, and you know, you're talking about all kinds of categories of airplanes. I talk about an MD-80 as an airliner, but you're also talking about C-130s and other aircraft like, like that, military aircraft, cargo aircraft, the kind of aircraft that FEMA would bring in here in a, in a time of emergency. So, everything helps.
Anyone else here from the public on this matter would like to speak?
Let me just add, really, the size of the airplane doesn't matter. If the wind's favoring that runway, it's a safety issue. If it's, if it's a Gulfstream or it's an MD-80, it doesn't matter. It's a safety issue.
I was bringing up the facts that were brought up to me in the past about we would be able to land larger aircraft, and it was a safety issue as well. So that's why I was trying to confirm with the director of the airport, to see what size airplane can land with the trees now without making any improvements to the landing strip. That's all I was asking.
Yeah, it's, and I understand.
I know it's a hazard for safety reasons as well.
Yeah, yeah, certainly be able to land, you know, a larger aircraft, you know, without getting into weight-bearing capacities of the runway. That's, that's another.
Right. What I would say to that is, you get, get rid of those trees, I can land the larger aircraft that we're talking about, could land it the next day. If I was going to have to frequently and over a period of time, then I would look to do other improvements to the airport in terms of its weight-bearing capacity, but we certainly could handle that on a, on a short term.
The other side of the coin is, there's, there's obstructions out there now, so when FAA decides to start doling out money for an airport, and you have these obstructions out there, and you got another airport overhead that doesn't have instructions, they're likely to get that money. So you're gonna get, I think you'll get more, more money from the FAA if you're in compliance instead of having these obstructions out there.
Anyone else in the public on this? Council members, questions or comments? I just want to confirm that there's money that was being, that was raised by the mayor's efforts, that those are, Andre, can you explain that arrangement for the record and so that everyone can understand?
Yes, we have, the mayor has solicited and received money from private individuals, private businesses, and public entities, and their agreement signed. Those entities, the private entities actually have a donation to the Hammond Air Show Foundation. Those monies are held in my trust account for the purpose of funding the purchase of this property, at least the difference. So I have $180,000 in my trust account. There's $50,000 pledged from Tangi Tourism that will be available after the first of the year. So I, with that $50,000, I'll have a total of $230,000 in my trust account to use toward the purchase of the property.
And you see no legal impediment for the Hammond Air Show donating that money for the purpose of the city purchasing this land?
There's no problem with that.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask you one other question about contract. I think I saw a draft contract a while back. We'll get to the actual contract, I guess, after the ordinance is passed, or?
Yes, the purchase agreement with the buyer, which has been already negotiated and I've sent you all the drafts, and the buyer has said, he's waiting for the council to decide what they're gonna do with it, but I see no reason in my conversations and meetings with him why he wouldn't sign the agreement unless the council approves it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I would just reiterate that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I mean, DOTD Aviation doesn't offer $1 million every year, and this money will expire unless the council acts tonight. So I encourage you to approve this matter.
Thank you. Number two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the city of Hammond, state of Louisiana, of its taxable sewer revenue bond, Series 2020, in an amount not to exceed $2,100,000, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of said bonds, providing for the payment thereof entering into certain other covenants and agreements in connection with the security and payment of said bonds, selling said bonds to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, authorizing the execution of a loan and pledge agreement and other loan documents with the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, providing for the delivery of the bonds to said department, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. David Wolf.
Thank you. I'm David Wolf with the Adams &amp; Rees Law Firm in New Orleans, representing the drinking water revolving, I'm sorry, Clean Water State Revolving Fund with DEQ. This is the ordinance that will authorize the city to issue the bonds that were approved at the election held last month. This has been a long process, but with the election passed, the next and final step is to adopt this ordinance. Under the city charter, you have to use an ordinance to incur debt, so this ordinance accomplishes that. The ordinance sets the terms of the loan, which are that it'll be repaid in 20 years. The interest rate will be .45%, and DEQ charges a half percent administrative fee, so that means that the total interest, if you will, will be .95% on this loan. The principal amount is $2,100,000. I think you all know that it's for making sewer improvements to the city sewer system, and it'll be payable from revenues of the sewer system, so no new taxes or anything like that. And once this ordinance is adopted, if it's adopted tonight, it'll be published in the Official Journal. That'll start a 30-day protest period during which the validity of the bonds can be contested, that sort of overlapping with the 60-day protest period on the results of the election, which is running already after the publication of the election results. And so this will probably be ready for delivery about February 1st. And after the first of the year, I'll be working with the administration and with the city's engineers on getting all the final paperwork to DEQ so that we can get the first draw made on this loan, like I said, around the first of February.
Anyone here from the public on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Thank you. Number three, an ordinance to amend the city of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 in accordance with the procedures set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter. Say the name.
We are amending the budget because we have completed the audit, and we are required to amend the budget because of the Louisiana Budget Act and according to the charter, so. And this is routinely, we do it after the audit usually.
Question, anyone here on the public, anyone here from the public on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Thank you. Now we'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
I'll ask you to rise for our prayer, and I'll ask Councilman Andrews to please lead us in prayer.
Most gracious, loving Father, we come to you right now and give you glory and honor that is due your name, thanking you for this day, dear heavenly Father, thanking you for your darling son, who died upon the cross that we too would have access to this real life. Father God, I thank you that everything will be done decent and in order and pleasing in your sight on tonight. I ask you to continue to bless the council, continue to guide us and keep us, continue to bless our city administration right now, Father God, continue to keep them on the right path. I ask you to continue to guide and keep our police and fire department right now, Father God, that they continue to protect and serve us and keep our city safe. We just thank you for it all, Father, because without you, we are nothing. And we just thank you right now, we just give you glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now for our pledge allegiance, I ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, eternal.
Now for reports, council reports.
At this time, I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. It's been one exciting year for me. I've enjoyed the ride thus far, and I'm really thankful for the citizens in District One for getting behind me and supporting me in the things that we do. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to bring something up front where a lot of people don't get to see it. The other day, I was in the chamber taking care of a little business, and a lady came in to thank Ms. Alma for helping her with a problem that she had. She was getting ready to go out of town, and she called in for some help, and Ms. Alma went over and above to help her, and the lady came, she had no idea that she was coming, but she came in to thank her for doing what she did for her over the phone. And that stuck out to me to let me know that we have some great people working in these offices here at the city that take care of their job. So I just wanted to bring that up to let them know that we got some great people working for us here in the city of Hammond.
Thank you. Steve, anything? Sam?
Just pretty much saying, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and enjoy the holidays with everyone's families, so, that's it.
I'll take the opportunity to say, the parade went off great, and I wanted to commend the city because literally, immediately following the parade, there was a massive influx of people picking up in the neighborhoods, and I know the residents appreciate that, and it makes our city look wonderful, and I know that's a big effort, so I thank the city for that. It makes, it makes the parade more enjoyable for the people who have it, who roll in front of their house, for sure. And also the lights in Zemurray, we had the opportunity to go ride the train last night in the rain with Frosty the Snowman driving, which was pretty fun. So, good job to the city for that. It really helped spread the holiday cheer, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Mayor?
Ditto to that. Thank you, council members, for all that you've done. It has been an interesting year, your first year under your belt. I think we've moved in the right direction. We, as all council members said, Merry Christmas to everyone and the families. Please enjoy your families for the Christmas season. I know we work very hard daily, but this is a time to just reflect and remember and enjoy your families and friends. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone, and also, thank you for recognizing employees, because that's truly who makes this city what it is. So we're a great team, and thank you to everyone. Merry Christmas.
Now for amendments of December 10th, 2019, need a motion, please?
Make a motion that we accept our amendment from our December 10th, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye. All business, none new business. Number one, a resolution supporting the submission of a $15,000 Kaboom Let's Play Community Construction Grant application for a new playground in Mooney Park, and two, supporting a cash match of at least $24,000. Charles Porters.
This is virtually identical to an application that we brought before you a few months back for Kate Square Playground. We've been working very closely with Councilman Wells and the administration, recreation, parks and grounds, to, to kind of come up with a redevelopment plan for the entire park, the playground being a part of that. We're anticipating a potential opportunity to apply in January, but it may not come until, the next council meeting may be afterwards, so we wanted to get this before you tonight so that if we had that opportunity, we could take advantage of it.
Anyone here with questions or comments? Question or comments from the council? Pleasure to the council.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. Number two, a resolution to approve the appointment of Elsbett Hollywood, representing the Greater Hammond Chamber of Commerce, to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021. Chelsea Tallo? Do we go a little tale or a little?
I still, I'm contemplating.
Okay. What's on, on the paper?
This is the Greater Hammond Chamber nominee. We ask, we send them a letter every two years requesting their new nominee, and they have chosen Elsbett, and we are happy to have her as part of our, our board if you guys vote yes.
Elsbett, do you want to say anything?
Just want to, just very briefly, Elsbett Hollywood, 711 North Oak Street, Hammond, Louisiana. I wanted to thank you for considering me. I greatly appreciate the Greater Hammond Chamber considering me. I live in downtown, I work in downtown, my children go to school in downtown, I'm very invested in not only our community, but especially, specifically our downtown. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to serve our community on the, on the DDD, and look forward to, to serving if you so choose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here from the public on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve the appointment?
Second.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to approve the appointment of Cassie Reagan, representing the mayor of Hammond, to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021. Chelsea.
This is the mayor's nominee, and Cassie could not be here tonight because they are open late with a rush for Christmas, so good job, everyone, shopping local. I don't know if you wanted to.
Actually, Cassie was gonna get off of the DDD, and when I found that out and talked to and asked her, as I have with other folks in town such as Guy Ricona, who have been fully invested and are at the point in their lives where they want to relax and possibly retire, just went to Cassie and asked if she would reconsider staying on this, keeping everything focused and moving in the right direction. She's done a great job, and I request the council to approve Cassie back on the DDD.
Cassie was one of the members that were strongly in favor of our brand when we changed to have a, she didn't choose the DDD brand, have her building on it, but she was really in favor of us rebranding and making sure people knew who the DDD is and what we do, so.
And she's one who could have easily moved her business to the mall, did open a second one in Spohr, but truly believes in downtown Hammond, and her heart and passion is there for us.
Anyone here on this matter? Question or comments by the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve the appointment?
Second.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to approve the appointment of a representative of the East Side Property Owners to the Downtown Development District Board for a two-year term from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021. Chelsea.
We have two nominees for this, Frank DeVittorio and Justin Thornhill. Both have served on the board before. Frank served a term ago, maybe?
Two years ago.
Two years ago as a chamber nominee. Justin is currently serving as the East Side Board Member?
Mayor's appointment.
Mayor's appointment, yeah. Both are great board members, and we ask the board sometimes to provide a recommendation for who they feel is best for this position, and they, the board believed that they're both good candidates, so they didn't give you guys any guidance. But they also are required to get five recommendations from business or property owners, and both of them went above that and got more than five, so.
Frank, did you want to address the council?
Frank DeVittorio, One Norbrook Circle. As Chelsea said, excuse me, I've been on the DDD before. I work here in downtown, vested here in downtown. You know, any questions y'all have, but I'm familiar with that downtown. I'd like to see it continue growing and making it better.
Thank you. Anyone else here on this would like to speak?
Justin also has the flip.
Oh, he has the flip, okay. Questions, comments from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve the appointment of Frank DeVittorio.
Second in motion.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Sustain.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Merry Christmas. Thank you, Chelsea. Five, a resolution to reappoint Stan Damren to a five-year term for the Hammond Tanjapahoa Home Mortgage Authority from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2024. Lacey Landrum.
As I explained, all these next appointments all come with reappointments to the mortgage authority. This is a public trust that was created in February of 1979. The authority's primary purpose is to provide funds to enable qualifying low and moderate income persons to purchase or, under certain circumstances, improve single-unit owner-occupied residences in Tanjapahoa. They have overseen a pot of money for a long time, and those funds have dwindled down considerably, but this board still has a few funds and is looking to be reappointed.
Where's, I really wasn't too familiar with this board in the past. It's, it's been around for a while, it seems that way, but are they, they're pretty active? Is there like a write-up somewhere about exactly, is it on the website?
They have a, so the best write-up to see is probably their audit, that you can find on the Legislative Auditor's website. It does give kind of a brief description of the board. Obviously, it goes over their financials and whatnot, and how they were created, but...
Anyone here on this matter? Questions, additional questions from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to re, motion to reappoint?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Aye.
Number six, sorry. Number six, a resolution to reappoint Andrew Gassaway for a five-year term for the Hammond Tanjapahoa Home Mortgage Authority from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2024. Lacey.
Same drill, just a different person.
Motion to reappoint?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DeVittorio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I wanted to make one little comment. That was, it's not singling anybody out or not, but I think it's a, you should be pretty honored to be on any of these boards in the city, and a lot of these appointments that we make, a lot of them do not even show up to these city council meetings. And I think it's a special moment, and you, and you're supposed, you should, you know, really, you know, feel special about yourself and, and honored. And I just, you know, to me, it's a little disappointing, but I just wanted to say that, but, and it's not singling anyone out, but it's, I know it's the holidays this month, but it's happened throughout the whole year this year, so I just wanted to make that statement on these appointments.
We can certainly ask them to attend. I think with reappointments, we generally do not ask that, but we can certainly do I think with reappointments, we generally do not ask that, but we can certainly do that in the future.
Number seven, a resolution to reappoint Sandra Davis to a five-year term for the Hammond-Tangbohua Home Mortgage Authority from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2024. Lacey. Any questions or comments? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Eight, a resolution to reappoint Stella Rimble to a five-year term for the Hammond-Tangbohua Mortgage Authority from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2024. Lacey. Any questions or comments? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to reappoint?
Second.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution to reappoint Susan Seal to the Hammond Historic District Commission for a four-year term from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2023. Lacey.
This is a reappointment to the Hammond Historic District. Ms. Seal is probably our longest-serving commissioner on this district, on this commission, and she attends the meetings regularly. She also routinely asks questions and offers insight to the people bringing applications to the board, and we believe she'd be a good reappointment to this commission.
Anyone here with comments or questions on this matter? Council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'll just also make one footnote there. Howard Nichols tendered his resignation from the Historic District Commission. Again, a wonderful commissioner who served many years, is really significant to the Hammond community. So, that new appointment goes before, like, it's out for advertisement and everything, and we've had several people show interest, but if you know of other people in your districts or throughout Hammond who might be interested, please send them to Jenny Garcia so she can get their application underway.
Thank you. Final adoption of ordinance, number one, final adoption of an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an active sale for the purchase by the city of 19.35 acres, more or less, and all improvements along the southerly side of US Highway 190, the easterly side of Gon Lane, and westerly side of Wainwright Road in Section 21 T6 SR8E Hammond-Tangbohua Parish, Louisiana, from Robert Amorin III and Jamestown Inc. for the price of $1,300,000. Motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption of ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of Hammond, State of Louisiana, of its taxable sewer revenue bond, Series 2020, in an amount not to exceed $2,100,000, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of said bonds, providing for the payment thereof, entering into certain other covenants and agreements in connection with the security and payment of said bonds, selling said bonds to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, authorizing the execution of a loan and pledge agreement and other loan documents from the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, providing for the delivery of the bonds to said department and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, final adoption of ordinance to amend the Hammond, the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 in accordance with the procedures set within Section 5-03 of the Hammond, the City of Hammond Charter. Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance to amend, ordinance UDC number 14-5364, Article 11.4.2, streetlight, street lighting general requirements, recommended approval by the Zoning Commission. Tracy Schalace.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
So, I'm bringing to you a recommendation from the Zoning Commission. This is brought to us by Janice and Robert Morgan to update some standards of our lighting requirements for new subdivisions. They are to match what energy standards are today, so we ask you to introduce this and set it for public hearing.
What's the big difference? Is it they're less quality, or what's the big difference between what?
They're going LED versus the, I forget what the other lighting is called, but we're going to a more standard in how those illuminate certain areas, and I think the current lighting, there's a lot of parts that are not able to be purchased, so, and if energy decides they want to take over the lights that we're installing, they would be up to their standards.
I see. Make a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.